Okay, so how's that?
I couldn't keep it together.
We on now?
Yes.
Okay. Superintendent, please call the room.
Mr. Begoli.
Present.
Mrs. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. Agatro. Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mrs. Santoro.
Present.
And Maeco.
Present.
Okay, before we begin, I'd like to read the following statement. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. At this time, I would take a motion from the committee to approve the regular minutes, meeting minutes of April 5th. On a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, I'll take another motion to approve the executive session minutes of April 5th. On a motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Agatro, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, at this time, I'll also take a motion to take out of order item A, student recognition, class of 2023 National Honor Society. Need to get these people home for homework. On a motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent?
Thank you. Tonight, we are recognizing the 128th class of 2003, 128, the 128th class of 2023 National Honor Society members from North Quincy High School in Quincy High School. All of these students merit special recognition for maintaining their academic performance during the challenges of the last few years, and that's no mean feat. The students are accompanied by their advisors Lauren Abbott, Carrie Anne Hart from North Quincy High School, and Sarah Levine from Quincy High School. Both, all of these individuals will introduce the students and present them with the certificates of recognition. So if I could invite Quincy High to the podium first? Sarah Levine from Quincy High School.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Levine. I'm the advisor of the National Honor Society at Quincy High School, and I am here to introduce our NHS students from Quincy High that are present tonight. We did have quite a few conflicts tonight with some sports athletic events, as well as studying AP tests are this week, but the students who are able to be here, they will rise and look after this way to shake the hand of the community members as I read your names. Liam McCoy. Angela Pham. Kelly Foo. Victoria Rapp. Reese Smith. And Skylar Wayland. Our students not in attendance tonight are Amira Atsaid, Onuchi Alamba, Sarah Alvaron, Zela Al, Jason Aldong, Matt Barkus, Madeline Barzia, Victoria Beltme, Jada Berry, Caleb Latcher, Marissa Kukuli, Caroline Campbell, Audrey Capone, Vanessa Chan, Alicia Anna Charbonneur, Kenny Chen, Charles Coffey, Rebecca Deng, Catherine Demopolis, Zing Wendaing, Mary Doherty, Jori Alsidek, Chloe Gora, Caitlin Vo, Brandon Hibbert, Wee Ho, Paige Holloman, Bonnie Wang, Sophia Wang, Ronak Shahaji Rian, Sarah Kabay, Alexandria Kane, Brianna Ketti, Shubham Kumar, Aiden Lee, Tiffany Lee, Josephine Liang, Ruby Levine, Tess Luzanne, May Dong Ma, Deekshita Madalum, Yu Fan Mei, Ariel Nguyen, Casey Nguyen, Dante Nguyen, Emily Nguyen, Catherine Nguyen, Lena Nguyen, Lilian Nguyen, Ni Nguyen, Sophia Nguyen, Trang Nu, Delia Nickel, Thomas O'Neil, Di Raj Prakash Viswanath, Jamie Sansusi, Annika Schmidt, Elham Shah, Siddiq Sharif, Max Spenlove, Sam Spenlove, Bryn Toller, Caroline Tracy, Anna Tran, Katrina Tran, Stephen Tran, Sam Trainer, Caitlin Vo, Almona Vojkalari, William Wismar, and Anna Zhang. Thank you.
And if I could ask the Quincy High School students to remain, we'll have a picture after the presentation to the North Quincy High students up here in the well for everyone to come up together, both North Quincy and Quincy. If I could have Lauren Abbott and Carrie Anne Hart from North Quincy High School to present their certificates.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carrie Anne Hart. I'm one of the co-advisors of North Quincy High School's National Honor Society chapter. We would like to thank you for inviting us tonight to recognize our 51 graduating senior members.
Hi, I'm Lauren Abbott, co-advisor along with Carrie Anne. I'm now going to introduce the students who were able to attend tonight's meeting. Helen Chen, sorry, Jessica Chen, Vanessa Chen, Erica Chung, Eva Coffey, Dominique Deng, Julian de Jesus, Maya Egan, Nicholas N. Barcello, Uringu Engarhal, Linda Gao, Ashna Guha, Su Huang, Megan Huang, Elton Huan, Katie Zheng, Michaela Lam, Kayla Lu, Ivan Lee, Jason Lee, Hetty Lin, Kayi Lin, Nicholas Moy, Sophie Narin, Isaac Ng, Mia Pesavich, Jack Pickering, Madeline Power, Caitlin Vu, Stella Wong, Josie Wu, Somiya Shi, Amy Zhang, and Elena Zhu.
Now going to recognize our students that were unable to attend the meeting due to academic and athletic conflicts. Nathan Caldwell, Anson Chan, Justin Chen, Anthony Chung, Ira Habiba, Amy Lu, Melanie Moy, Grant Murphy, Kate Murray, Molly Nelson, Alexander Stankoff, Maxwell Toomey, Antony Tran, Lily Tran, Isabel Wu, Sinny Zhang, and Alex Lee. Thank you.
If we could have all the students come up to the well for a photo with the school committee, that would be great.
You guys are gonna have to back up to the end here so you make room.
Sorry, you're not blocking us. It's okay. You're good, you're good. Don't worry.
All the tall people right there.
I do the same thing. That's perfect. As we close that portion of the meeting, I'd just like to congratulate not only yourselves, but also your parents, your families, the staff that got you there, your two proud principals, Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Ford. Congratulations to all of you. You are the cream of the crop, and you are making everybody proud, including your school committee, so thank you very much. Thank you for attending as well. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess. If you would like to leave, this would be a good time to leave. We'll rejoin the meeting in five minutes. Okay, we'll resume our meeting to the open forum portion. This is an opportunity for community input regarding the QPS. Community is in context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends QPS or an employee of QPS. Non-community people may, are not permitted to speak at open forum, but may submit written statements to the school committee. Now, after giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee, and an individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to QSCO Open Forum at Quincy Public Schools. At this time, is there anybody for open forum? If so, please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bartholomew Jay. I live in 6 Floran Street in Wallaston. I've been a resident of Quincy for over 40 years. I'm a parent of two children of each. No. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I would also like to thank the students and parents for all of their efforts in bringing this important topic before you again. I stand in solidarity with them to ask you to consider designating the Lunar New Year as a day off for the school calendar. You've heard the arguments that the decision is right because the Asian student population is significant in Quincy, to the point where it is the majority of one of the two high schools in the city. The trends of the lower grades indicate that these numbers were sustained for years to come. This moment is about saying to the second-largest population of Quincy with zero representation in the school calendar year that "we see you." I immigrated from Hong Kong when I was 10 years old to Quincy. My teachers, administrators, friends, and their loving parents were very kind to me. They took the time to see me for who I was, they were curious about my culture, and they helped me find my way in this new world. They gave me a sense of belonging. It is with that feeling that allowed me to thrive in this community and contribute to it today. This moment is about telling our Asian students, "you belong here." It is about planting seeds and nurturing our youth and helping them to thrive and engage in this community. You know education has a role in helping our students to celebrate different cultures. It helps us to move forward as a diverse community. It lifts us out of the times when terms such as tolerance were used to describe race in this country. We can bring the Quincy community together through education. It is time that we challenge the status quo. The school calendar year has many sacred cows, no school before Labor Day, set aside a week for skiing in February. Many school systems around the country have moved past these notions years ago. This is the first week of Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month for 2023 in America. We are also in the shadow of the 250th anniversary of the Boston Tea Party. Quincy needs to tell the world that we understand, just as our forefathers did, the importance of representation, changing the status quo, and thriving together. Now is the time to promote mutual understanding, unity, and respect, and make progress against division and racism, especially in our high schools. The Asian parents and students of this community have spoken. We should stand together and respond with "we see you." You belong in Quincy, and we can thrive together. Thank you.
Anybody else for open forum?
First, I want to say thank you for your service. You serve a really important role in our community, and I ask tonight, as a parent...
Could you just state your name and address?
Oh, sure. Sorry, Kate Campbell, 37 Cranch Street, Quincy. I'll start by saying I thank you for your service, and I believe that you serve such a critical role in our community. I'm a proud mom of two Asian American high schoolers, and I, and I ask that you kindly take a moment to put aside your perspectives and your perception and listen to the voices that you are hearing around you, sharing their stories. The ask is simple. Please have our school holidays reflect and respect the current population of our community. As our city demographics have shifted and changed over time, and we have continued to benefit from the strengths of a more diverse community, our school holidays have largely stayed the same, honoring the beliefs and traditions of some and ignoring the beliefs and traditions of many others. While it is tempting to say that we cannot give a day off from school for every holiday that every person celebrates, that is just a distraction from what the students of North Quincy High School and a significant number of our community members are asking you to pay attention to. Our city has a large and vitally important Asian community that is asking to be seen and respected. The population of our schools range from 12% to 65% Asian, with five schools having over 50% of their student body identified as Asian. 39% of the district's students are identified as Asian. A majority of these students and their families celebrate Lunar New Year. It is time for the school committee to recognize and honor that. It is not enough to say that it will be an excused absence. These students will miss teaching, and their peers will miss the benefit of their presence. Do not let logistics, or "we've always done it this way," or the false concern that now we have to give a day off for every holiday that anyone, anywhere celebrates, stand in the way of making the right decision and moving forward as a community. With, when students speak, please listen. Your role as school committee members is far too vital and valuable in this community to ignore their voices. Thank you.
Anyone else open forum?
Hi, my name is Esther Lee on 134 Grandview Avenue. I stay with my son for the past four years in Quincy babysitting my grandson, and he is going to the Snug preschool right now. So I have many reasons to love Quincy. Here are three reasons I want to mention for today. We have a Chinese-American city counselor at large, Nina Liang. We have a supportive mayor, Coke, and a great school system, and thank you for Quincy School Committee for doing a great job. To support what I just said, I'm the president of Chinese-American Heritage Foundation. A few months ago, we have organized a candlelight vigil for Half Moon Bay, the mass shooting in California. Almost all victims were Asians, and we were invited many elected officials, including Quincy Mayor Coke, to attend, and he accepted our invitation right away and came to Boston Chinatown and making a touching speech, and I want to thank him again. I also am the past president of Chinese-American Citizens License of Boston. We have an annual gala every year, and we invited Sergeant, sorry, the Lanzo and North Quincy High School ROTC to do the presentation of colors. The students did a wonderful job every year, and they are polite, helpful, and respectful, and I'm very impressed. And they are actually mostly Asian American students. I truly believe Quincy has a very diverse and supportive system to our community. So to be able to observe the Lunar New Year, Asian students will feel very included, and we can use this opportunity to share our Asian culture with all the students as well. This will be an excellent addition to show our diversity. So please reconsider to add Lunar New Year as a holiday to the public school calendar. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Scott Alessandro, 70 Edward Street. I support making Lunar New Year a school holiday in Quincy. When we discuss the schools in Quincy, we talk about the importance of our neighborhood schools in honoring the uniqueness of each school and the community it serves. When we talk about Quincy, we talk about what makes Quincy unique and special, and, and talk about what makes Quincy unique and special, and that is reflected in what resources and opportunities we make available to the residents of Quincy. It's also what we build, it's what we celebrate, and this is why I support Lunar New Year for Quincy Public Schools. One of the things that makes Quincy unique, as compared to Braintree, or Weymouth, or Milton, or Hingham, or many of our other neighbors, is the large and vibrant Asian community that adds so much to our city. Honoring Lunar New Year may not make sense for other districts, but it makes sense for Quincy. A day off from school should not be taken lightly. Extending the end of the school year should not be taken lightly, and in Quincy, we have already determined that we are willing to sacrifice having school go later into June for things we value. We start after Labor Day, something I and many other parents are thankful for. It lets us truly say goodbye this summer and start a new school year looking forward. Last year, we made Election Day a school holiday. Even if there were no safety considerations with respect to schools as polling locations, it sends an important message to our community that voting is important. For the city of presidents, having Election Day off makes sense. Good Friday is another holiday where Quincy has said, "for our community, it makes sense to take the day off, to have the day off." And again, for Quincy, Lunar New Year is a day that stands equally with our previous decisions. As for Quincy, it makes sense to have that day off. I know there is a worry about where do we stop? What other holidays or observances should we cancel school for? We'll discuss and debate and ultimately decide what makes sense for Quincy, what makes sense based upon our history, our present, and our future trajectory. We'll decide upon what we value as a community and a school community, and how we represent those values. Our Asian community is a significant and increasing part of our Quincy community in both size, visibility, and impact. By making Lunar New Year a school holiday, we will be showing our students that our schools and our community understand the importance of this day and the importance of East and Southeast Asian culture in contributing to our amazing city. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin McCoy, 53 Kimball Street in West Quincy, a proud parent of a QPS senior that just shook all of your hands, and a rising, oh, sorry, QHS, and a rising QHS freshman for next year. And I hope you took a good look at those students who just shook your hands, many, many of them, dozens of them, of Asian descent. If we, as a city, are willing and able and eager to provide special recognition for those students and celebrate their academic achievements, and dare I say, claim those academic achievements as our own, we ought to be just as willing and eager to honor the cultural heritage of those 39% of students in Quincy Public Schools who celebrate the holiday of Lunar New Year and who have been so willing to share that holiday with our city over the years during the Lunar New Year Festival. We should allow all of these students and families the opportunity to celebrate this holiday with their families and friends, just as we do with ours, as Anglo, right, for New Years, as we have for many, many years. Other cities in the states such as Cambridge have managed to figure out how to construct a school calendar that honors the variety of cultural heritages represented in that city, and I dare say, their academics have not suffered as a result. It's not enough to celebrate Lunar New Year during the school day, though I am incredibly grateful that my children have learned and have been able to celebrate with their friends during school what Lunar New Year is, but if I get to have New Year's Day off on January 1st, my neighbors who celebrate Lunar New Years should do.
Hi, everyone. My name is Courtney Perdius, and I live at 86 Rugel Street in Quincy Point. I wanted to add my voice to those in support of including Lunar New Year as a no-school day in Quincy. Honestly, to me, it seems like a no-brainer decision to include it as a day off. A huge percent of our population in Quincy is Asian. We all know that. We have 19 school buildings in Quincy, and in 11 of them, the majority race of the student body is Asian American. It's the biggest holiday for Asian families, and as such a hugely represented culture in our city and our schools, it seems obvious to me that, that we look at giving it as a day off to reflect that. But because all of the school committee members, aside from Mr. Santoro, seem to be against adding Lunar New Year as a day off, I tried to brainstorm all the reasons I could think of for not doing so. Everything that I thought seemed to fall into two buckets. The first, there's not enough support for changing it, and the second, we're stuck in the past and we're afraid to change. So I wanted to take a look at each of those a little more closely. There's obviously plenty of support for changing the calendar to include Lunar New Year as a day off. You've heard from QPS students, families, educators, community members. There are over 1,200 signatures on a petition. We know how large of a population this affects, so we know the positive impact it would have on those families. So the problem clearly can't be lack of support, which leaves the second bucket. Changing things brings the unknown, and the unknown is scary, right? In this case, if we give Lunar New Year off, what about all the other cultures, holidays, and celebrations? Will we have to give all of those days off too? But there's so many, where will it end? Will we ever have school again? Obviously, that's pretty extreme, but that's the fear, right? So if we can't give all the holidays off and be equal to all the cultures, then let's not give anyone anything. Let's not do anything. Let's keep it the same. And that feels like where we're at today, but that's not okay. Letting fear lead to inaction because we can't work together to figure out the details is shortsighted and frankly cowardly. I mean, if we get creative for a minute, let's think about how to address the other holidays. How can we respect other cultures even if we're not giving them the day off? Well, we could certainly start by including a comprehensive list of other cultures, holidays, and celebrations on our school calendar. Last year, that idea was discussed, but that idea was discarded by this board because it cluttered up the old format and made it hard to read. Is that really the best we can do? With all the graphic design programs and software out there, we can't find a way to create a school calendar that's legible, that lists holidays on the month they're celebrated? We tackled remote learning during COVID. I think we can handle a design challenge. We can also check in every five years or so on the makeup of our student body and have the conversation about which days, days off make sense at that time. Clearly, right now, not having Lunar New Year off is impacting a significant number of our students. Let's not let the fear of the unknown keep us stuck doing things the way we've always done them. Let's take this first step to our being more inclusive and equitable in Quincy by giving this large population of our student body a no-school day to spend with their families, then we can work to figure the rest out. Thank you.
My name is Truc Lai. I live at 24 Clive Street in Quincy. I am a mother of two children in the Quincy Public School. I am of Asian American descent, Vietnamese, and my children are Chinese and Vietnamese. Looking at the data and the statistics of Quincy Public Schools, 13 out of the 19 schools have over 30% Asian American. Five out of those 19 schools have a population of over 50% Asian students. So if all those students were to take the day off, only half of the students will be there. So some schools may only have 116, or 115, or 113 students attending those days. or a hundred fifteen, or a hundred thirteen students attending those days. So it makes sense that we should have Lunar New Year off on Lunar, from school. Quincy is a thriving Asian American town. There are Asian businesses up and down Hancock Street. We hang up lanterns during Lunar New Year to show that we celebrate this culture. We have Lunar New Year festivals at the North Quincy High School. We celebrate Oktoberfest festival, where we shut down the street. We have vendors. We have lion dancing. We have dragon dancing. All of you sit on the stage. You take an orange from the lion to get good luck. You get lettuces to wish you luck. You take pictures. You recognize student accomplishment. Many of the students, as was mentioned, are of Asian American descent. Asian American students do represent a large accomplishment here in the city of Quincy and also in QPS. But you're playing into the stereotype that Asians should be seen but not heard. You are taking pictures. You have my beautiful children in the Quincy education, Desi commercials, two Asian brothers riding their bike down Quincy Street, looking at the sign, looking at the historical buildings of Quincy. But here we are, saying that Lunar New Year is not important and that Asian Americans are not important. I hope you change that. I hope you are listening to us. And also look at the data and look at what the students are asking you. I hope that one day, many of the former Quincy Asian American students can come back and say, you know what, I really wish that my school committee did give us Lunar New Year off. So please, I hope you amend, make an amendment, and suggest that we add Lunar New Year into the calendar for next year. And if you don't, our children and our families will continue to fight for this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Albert Lee, and I live at twenty-three Bailey Street in Marymount. I'm a second-generation Taiwanese immigrant. Both my parents were from Taiwan, and I am ethnically and culturally tied to the Chinese diaspora here. Thank you all for helping create a very strong education system in Quincy. One of my colleagues' friends, also a second-generation immigrant. In her case, her family is from China. Grew up here on the South Shore and chose to stay in Quincy to raise her six-month-old child because she believes the school system here will give her kid the strongest opportunities going forward in the future, and she's hoping to, you know, stay here for many years to come and raise her kid. Previous speakers have mentioned that Quincy has a large Asian community. I would like to clarify that it is not a monolith. There are many separate and also intermingled East Asian as well as Southeast Asian communities. Yet, the Lunar New Year is celebrated as, you know, one of the most important, if not, in most cases, the most important traditional holidays across almost all of these cultures. And that history extends back thousands of years in some cases. And it's for our Chinese-American community, our Taiwanese-American community, our Vietnamese-American community, and our Korean-American communities always falls on the same day every year. And it's a time for their families to get together, for the elders to give gifts to the younger, for everyone to feast, to kind of disconnect as a larger, to their extended family, and for the kids to, in this case, to have a connection back to their heritage and also the connection between the different generations and their families. And one thing I've heard brought up is that, well, the holiday is already marked on the bottom of the calendar, and kids can request, or parents can request the day off for their students with no penalty. But it's not enough just to say, okay, well, you can choose to take the day off, but you'll have to make up for it later. Kids will not, you know, will just not be able to have the same experience as their peers if they have to. It's just not very inclusive for kids to have to be, kind of, make an exception for that day on behalf of their own families. So I hope you'll consider making the Lunar New Year an actual school holiday for the entire school system. And I think a lot of families here would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum?
Hello, my name is Tyler Lam. I am a student at Atlantic Middle School. I think we should have Lunar New Year as a school holiday because I celebrate Lunar New Year every year with my family and do all different things to bring in luck for the New Year. In Quincy, there are all different cultural holidays celebrated throughout the year. So I think that Lunar New Year should be celebrated.
Anyone else for open forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to the agenda. This item will be taken up for a vote after the superintendent's report. We will return to superintendent's report, item B, Elementary and Middle School Spring Concerts. Superintendent?
Thank you very much, and good evening again, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have letters to be read for open forum as well. My apologies.
So we have a letter, a very similar letter, that was submitted by a number of people. And so I'm going to read that. This was submitted by Susan Chin Sen, Man Chuk Lam, Bartholomew Jay, Mai Du, Grace Young Jay, Truc Lai, Kristen Perry, Samson Lee, Heather Mcduffus, Andrea So, Ty Leon, Andrea Rafe, Ben Hires, and Annie Tru. I'm deeply concerned about Quincy Public Schools Committee's efforts to align the school calendar with the interests of Quincy Public Schools students and families by including Lunar New Year as a school holiday for students and families to respectfully observe one of the most important annual celebrations in many East and Southeast Asian cultures. The students are clearly asking for it and are making their voices heard. I'm concerned about Quincy's reputation as a city that welcomes and respects residents of all backgrounds. I urge the School Committee Council to evaluate the full calendar to find a resolution that does not marginalize the largest population of Quincy in Quincy Public Schools students. The city of Quincy's population is reported as thirty percent Asian, and for the 2022-2023 Quincy Public Schools enrollment data cites thirty-nine point three percent Asian. Including Lunar New Year in the Quincy Public Schools' calendar would also keep current with other city, state, and even federal initiatives to support and respect cultural and religious observances of significant Asian populations. Among city and town designations are New York City, where former Mayor Bill de Blasio designated Lunar New Year a public school holiday in 2015. In Boston, as of February 2023, the city of Boston passed Lunar New Year as a citywide holiday. Additional municipalities in Massachusetts that include Lunar New Year in the school calendar, Brookline, Hopkinton, and Wayland. For statewide recognitions, California Governor Gavin Newsom signed a bill last year declaring Lunar New Year, which typically falls on the second new moon after the winter solstice, "to be a state holiday, a way to acknowledge the diversity and cultural significance Asian Americans bring to California," he said in his signing message. And at the federal level, federal efforts are being led by Congresswoman Grace Meng from New York advocating for the Lunar New Year Act, which would make the Lunar New Year a federal holiday in the United States. I support including Lunar New Year in the Quincy Public Schools' calendar as a designated day off and urge you to vote yes to do the same. Thank you for your commitment to serving and representing your community. The next letter is from Kim Christinger, who is a Quincy Public Schools teacher, to members of the school committee. As a teacher at Central Middle School, I strongly stand in support of the proposal to recognize Lunar New Year as a holiday for Quincy Public Schools. Ms. Chen and the other students from North Quincy High School's Asian Cultural Club have shone a light on a major issue within this school district. Quincy Public Schools enrolls thirty-nine percent of Asian students whose major family holiday is Lunar New Year. Speaking from experience, I have witnessed students over the years torn and upset that they must choose between their family tradition and their education. Quincy Public Schools does a great job of celebrating the diversity in our student body, but in this area, we are falling short. If for nothing else but to display the district's focus on equity, I suggest that Quincy Public Schools, a district that recognizes the Catholic holiday of Good Friday on our calendar, thinks long and hard about this proposal. Quincy's Asian families deserve to celebrate their holiday without worrying about missing their schoolwork. This letter is also from a teacher, Jessica King. Good evening. The North Quincy High School Asian Cultural Club and the other Asian students in Quincy are requesting to recognize Lunar New Year as a holiday for Quincy Public Schools. I commend these students on coming together and using their voice for their cause, and I support them. The city of Quincy's population is thirty percent Asian, and Quincy Public Schools enrolls thirty-nine percent Asian students whose major festival is Lunar New Year. Asian families deserve to celebrate their holidays without worrying about missing their schoolwork. Many of my colleagues celebrate the holiday as well. Please consider granting this request. And the last letter is from City Councilor-at-Large Neil Yang. Dear members of the school committee, first and foremost, I regret that due to a prior commitment, I am not able to attend this evening's school committee meeting regarding the recognition of Lunar New Year as a holiday on the Quincy Public Schools' calendar. Please accept this letter as notice of my support for this important recognition. Although it's been referred to as a holiday in both religious and cultural perspectives, there is no single term that can adequately capture the importance of what Lunar New Year means to me and other members of the AAPI community. Growing up, and still today, I appreciate this time of year as a time to reflect, celebrate, and gather together with family and loved ones to welcome in the New Year. The traditions my family practices in celebration and honor of Lunar New Year have also instilled in me the values that connect us deeply to family, culture, and life. They have shaped who I am in appreciating the importance of togetherness, of respect, and of gratitude. This time of year is more than just a holiday. It is a defining, integral part of who we are. I speak for myself and the way my family celebrates this time of year and recognize that not unlike other holidays, they are celebrated in similar and varying ways from family to family. At its core, however, the important thing is that families have the time to focus on celebrating and observing said holiday. We are elected to represent the voices of the people, and the people, including the students, have spoken. The majority of the population in our schools identifies as AAPI, and they have made their voices heard. They are the future of this city, and we have a responsibility to them. Who are we to ignore them, and what message do we send if we tell them no? I urge you to consider that it is easy to keep things status quo, but it is our job to listen and respond when the status quo needs to be changed. I respectfully ask that you listen to the voices of those you are elected to represent and ask that you vote yes in favor of recognizing Lunar New Year as a holiday on the calendar. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Owens. Okay, we'll now return to the superintendent's report.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Guttrow.
I just want to make a motion that we take it out of order, because so many people are here.
On a motion of Mr. Guttrow that we take item, O Business, item A, out of order, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Roll call vote, please, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
Mia Coke?
Yes.
Okay, we are now under O Business, item A, 2023-2024 Quincy Public Schools' school year calendar. This item is up for a vote. Mr. Begoli to report.
We have this, I'm sorry. We have this item before us, obviously, and we need a motion to, or I'd like to have, to open the floor to discussion, if that's okay with everybody.
Is there a motion to approve the 2023-2024?
Let's open the floor to discussion if anybody wants to.
You need a motions. We can discuss the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On a motion, Mr. Guttrow, we approve the calendar as given to us by the policy subcommittee, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. All those in favor of the motion being brought forward, we're good? Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'm opening it up to the committee, and if anybody has anything.
Any discussion from the committee? Mr. Guttrow?
If I could through you, if Mrs. Owens could just explain to the public and the people watching at home what we changed in the calendar since last year, and then I'll speak on the motion.
Mrs. Owens?
The only change to the calendar was to add the November Election Day, or to continue that. It was, it has been intermittently a day off, and the school committee agreed to formalize that so that the November Election Day would be a no-school day. And that's the only difference between last year's calendar and this.
Can I add a point of information on that?
Excuse me. Mia Coke has the floor.
Just to add to that, Joanne Bragg raised that issue a number of years ago, she was on the committee, about the schools being open on Election Day. And as we've seen, us work very hard on security issues. It became a security issue. It wasn't to take the day off so more people would vote. It was really to keep the schools secure in today's world we live in. So just want to make that clear.
Okay. Mrs. Hubley, did you have a, Mrs. Owens?
So Mrs. Hubley reminded me also, we did add a section at the bottom of the calendar that listed cultural and religious holidays, a number of different dates that would be recognized as dates that assignments shouldn't be due, events shouldn't be scheduled, and that that does include Lunar New Year, among others.
Okay, Mr. Guttrow?
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak about my perspective on this because I've thought about it and I've done some research on it. And we had discussion, I think in multiple policy committee meetings, we had a variety of different discussions. So first of all, I want to thank all of those that came up and testified tonight and spoke and reached out to the school committee and provided some of their comments. Second of all, I think diversity is the pride of our schools. You know, you can see it in every person that comes up before us and does their student improvement plans and talks about it. Mr. Ford, who was up there earlier today, if you walk into Quincy High School, you will see at least forty flags are out there. And the forty flags are from the native lands of all of the students that are in that school. So many schools do an awful lot to embrace culture in their schools from students all over the world in the indigenous communities. The other thing that I'm extraordinarily proud about is that...
Like the mayor, I'm a history buff. And pre-COVID, the Quincy Historic Society used to do a variety of different seminars on really the settlement, immigrant settlements that happened into the city of Quincy. And I had been to a number of them. I hadn't been to all of them, where they talked about the immigration of the Swedes, and the Finns, and the Irish, and the Italians, and the Chinese, and the Vietnamese, and the Indians. And it was just so enlightening to me how, over the decades, you would see generation after generation come and migrate to the city, and then some have migrated, subsequently migrated, out of the city. But it really tells you about the fabric and the character of the city. So... So the question is, do we designate a day off, single holiday, based on one ethnicity? And so you look back at, over the generations that we've had, and the ethnicities that we've had, and we think, has the school committee ever created a holiday? And I asked my colleagues, I'm unaware of any holiday based on any ethnicity. So is it the ethnicity of the moment, and then what might the triggers be if we're going to change that? So, for example, in the 1980s, when I was a graduate of Quincy Public Schools, there was a giant majority of Irish in the city of Quincy. I have no recollection of St. Patrick's Day being a day off, or anybody petitioning for St. Patrick's Day to be off. So if the majority rules, then the question is, what is the trigger to establish or rescind that holiday? Because when we were young, we used to have Jewish temples. Well, how many Jewish temples are in the city of Quincy, and now that the Jewish population has diminished, you know, consequent, consequently, so subsequent to that. And there are other ethnic populations that have come and gone. So what would the trigger be for us to make a determination? Would we look every 10 years at a census? And this is just me analyzing what the trigger would be to establish and then subsequently rescind based on the majority of the population that comes in into the city of Quincy. So, you know, I've also done some homework and, you know, talked to Lowell and Malden and asked if they're contemplating a Lunar New Year holiday, Superintendent's office there, that have equally large populations comparable, and that's not under consideration. Then you look at colleges and universities and how they handle cultural or religious holidays. And I pulled off one of them, which is one that I'm familiar with, American University, which is an extraordinarily diverse school down in DC. It says, "The diverse community of American University celebrates several different religious and cultural holidays. Please be mindful of the following dates that require accommodation and are observed by a meaningful proportion of the AU community." Then it goes on to say, "For some of the traditions represented on campus, the cessation of regular activities and/or work is a component of the holiday. This would impact the student's participation in class, the completion of assignments on those dates. The student is responsible for notifying the professor of conflicts with course materials, religious-cultural observances in a timely manner. The expectation is an arrangement can be made with the professor and the student," and it goes on. It says, "Our communities will celebrate over 60 religious-cultural holidays during the course of the year." That's just one, and it's got a list of what those holidays are. The, and then, as also noted, I think Mrs. Hubley pointed out, in the bottom left of our calendar that is before us, it says, "The dates below, major religious and cultural holidays, the dates below are recognized as important days in the lives of students and families. QPS staff members will strive to avoid scheduling deadlines for long-term assignments, assessments, field trips, auditions, events, and athletic competition for the following days. September 16, 17, Rosh Hashanah; September 25, Yom Kippur; November 12, Diwali; December 7 to 15, Hanukkah; December 26 to January 1, Kwanzaa; January 6, Three Kings' Day; February 10, Lunar New Year; March 10, Ramadan begins; March 25, Holy; March, April 9 through 10, Edifatir; April 22, Passover begins." So that's what's in our calendar that's before us at the moment. So I support Lunar New Year observance. I also support the observances for Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Three Kings' Day, Ramadan, Holy, Edifatir, and Passover. And finally, I want to say, so I want to say that, isn't our DEI initiatives, and we established a DEI subcommittee in the Quincy School Committee, about ensuring that all cultures and religions are treated similarly with respect, and not singling out one without the demographics? The final point that I want to make, and if we choose to do it based on demographics, then we need to set up some kind of a system that says, over 10 years, 20 years, whatever the case may be, we reevaluate the recognition of it based on the demographics of the city. Because as I've just indicated, the demographics change over every decade. People come and go. So that's my feeling. And then the other, the other piece is, if you create a school day off, and you are a parent that works for the city of Quincy, what do you do for childcare? What do you do for, so it's not a city holiday, it's a school holiday. So if a city is to contemplate it, shouldn't it be a city that contemplated, contemplates it instead of doing it piecemeal with the school? So there are a couple of fundamental things. One, should we choose ethnicities and holidays and observances based on majority in our city? And I think that's a fair discussion to have. And then are we singling one out over the other? And I'm telling you that the position that I'm holding right now is, I value all of these faiths, all of these cultures, all of these traditions, and I want to treat them all fairly inequitably. The final thought, and I have one more thought, and this is to you, Mr. Superintendent, is that after the last meeting, we had a discussion, I stayed with some of the residents, and the vice chair was there as well, and it seemed clear, and the vice chair can speak for himself, that he indicated, and it says here, again, I'm going to read it, "These dates below," and this is what we would adopt as a school committee, "these dates below are recognized as important days in the lives of students and families. QPS staff will strive to avoid scheduling deadlines for long-term assignments, assessments, field trips, auditions, events, and athletic competition on these days." It was asserted to me after the last meeting, that is unenforceable. That is unenforceable. I don't want to vote on something that's unenforceable. I want to vote on something where we're treating everybody equally. So the question is, how do we manage and respect all of those cultures and make sure that we are following, executing exactly what this committee is adopting, so that all of these folks can be treated exactly the same? So through you, Mr. Vice Chair, to the superintendent.
So I have not heard that it was unenforceable. That's the first time I've heard that. But what we do is we, obviously, if this calendar is passed today, we will obviously communicate that to our principals, to our department heads, to our coordinators, obviously to the SLT, to make sure that that communication from the school committee gets to the schools and that it's enforced through the principals, through the assistant principals, through other administrators, to make sure that our athletic director, for athletics, for instance, that it's done to the best of our ability. And if that is the will of the committee for us to do that, we will, we will execute on that directive.
Thank you. And finally, I want to say, I love, I love the diversity of our city. I love how our city has changed since I was in high school. And I value that in a gigantic way. And, you know, I respect all cultures, I enjoy going to a variety of different cultural traditions. Again, at the end of the day, I feel like our job is to respect all faiths, all cultures, make sure everybody's treated equally. To me, that's what our DEI subcommittee is about. And, you know, to the extent that we can, I want to ensure that within our calendar, we respect all faiths and cultures. So I didn't mention that, we didn't say that at the subcommittee meeting, and you may disagree with me, and I respect that, but I felt like I've given a lot of thought about it. I reflected on it, and this is where I've come out. And so I want to take the opportunity, and I thank the vice chair for allowing me to share that.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. I had something else to say, but I'm going to say something else instead, because Mr. Guttrow was very moving, and I respect everything you just said. That was very well put. And brought to my mind that we used to actually also have an Italian festival in Quincy, and we no longer have the Italian festival anymore. I was watching today on QA TV, the multicultural festival presentation. We did a great job. And they were talking about how there are over 70 unique languages spoke, spoken at Quincy High School. And I didn't know there were a lot, but that was intriguing to me to find that it was over 70. And that they have over 40 booths already represented, and that's impressive, up from 15 from last year. So that was, that's awesome. And that just represents how much cultural diversity we have in our system and the multicultural nature, nature of our, of our students and families. And to give a plug, May 13th, it's going to be an awesome day, 12 to 4. Multicultural Festival Night.org. Anyway, so, and I, I think that what we're doing with the bottom of the calendar is wonderful, and I think it respects, and it is equitable to all of our families in the school, which is what we have to do. We see and respect all the students of QPS, and that's what I just want to add. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Cahill?
I would like to say that, a couple of things. One, I think this year and next year, you know, the holiday is on a Saturday and a Sunday, so I don't even know if that's something that we even need to think about for this calendar year or the next calendar year, to give a day off outside of that first day of the Lunar New Year. A reason for me to especially think this way is that we're just coming off two years of COVID, kids have not been in the classroom, we talk a lot about learning loss and social, emotional issues, and I think that we want to try to keep our kids in school and not out of school at this time, to try and see if we can make up some of that ground. If, again, I think if this was Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, it might be something that we should be thinking about more considerably. I do agree with the DEI piece that this calendar is equitable to all of our students and their cultures and their holidays, but our job is not just to comment on cultural and religious practices, it's about education. And we're here to, you know, hope that we are giving our kids the best tools and the education that they need to succeed, and we can't do that if they're not in the classroom. So for me, I think it's a mute point based on the day that the holiday is on, a Saturday or Sunday. And that's where I stand. I apologize if I disappoint any of my friends in the Asian community with my vote, but that's where I stand this year.
Any other comments? Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. I have to thank my colleague, Mr. Guttrow, because I think he expressed it, my feelings really, really clearly. I really feel like everybody should be celebrated equally, and I don't think that there's a tipping point, I don't think there's a number where we get tipped over. As you can see, we had, we did have Italian cultural events in our city for years. They didn't have Italian holidays, but we had Italian cultural events in our city for years. And our population isn't as large now, and we don't do it anymore. But I really think that, I think what the city does, and I think what most of us do, most of the politicians, for sure, celebrate with the Asian community whenever we can. I mean, the events are incredible that the city puts on, and the city supports the Asian community from putting on, and they are real celebrations of that culture. And I'm comfortable with that, I really am comfortable with that. But I'm not comfortable with separating out one entity, one ethnicity group, from the 40 flags, the 70 languages that we have in our schools, and saying that this one is more important than yours. And that's, that's what it would sound like to me if I was an Indian student, or if I was some other nationality, and I said, well, I guess being this is not quite as important in Quincy as being Asian is. Being a Latinx is not quite as important. So I worry about that aspect of it. I welcome the diversity also, Mr. Guttrow. It is amazing to see when you walk into our buildings, and it's, they're diverse, I mean, very, very diverse, lots of diversity, lots of different, lots of different ethnicities and cultures. And I'm, I would be uncomfortable, I would be uncomfortable changing the calendar.
Any other discussion? Mayor Koch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got a question, Superintendent. I don't, I don't know, have we done a, I've heard some communities alluded to in the comments, have we done any surveys from your office to other systems? So in Massachusetts, I'd assume more, eastern Massachusetts, how many communities do it? And under what criteria or?
We do have that data, I can tell you, and Mrs. Owens can tell you that more specifically, but I can tell you that there are a few communities that do celebrate Lunar New Year. Those communities celebrate it on the day that Lunar New Year falls. So if it falls on a weekend, it's not recognized as a holiday in their calendar. If it does fall on a school day during, in these few communities, and Mrs. Owens can review what those are, the holiday is followed. I know one of them, I think, is Brookline.
Brook, yes, Brookline, and I believe Holyoke, I'm sorry.
Hopkinton.
Hopkinton and Wayland. Thank you. Hopkinton and Wayland have done it in the past, but so the, so this past year, Lunar New Year was a Sunday, and this coming year, it's a Saturday, and so school systems don't often have their older calendars, so it was difficult to determine. I know for sure that Brookline did observe it when it was last a weekday, and that would have been in 2022.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments by Mr. Guttrow, you did some homework there. I have frequently spoken in public about the history of our city and how proud we are to be a gateway city, and how proud we are that we have welcomed folks from all across the world for generations. If you look at the population now, we're about a third immigrate. If you go back 100 years, we're about a third immigrate. Different faces, come from different countries. And I do want to say that I believe that the city has really embraced the diversity. I think every department has responded, mostly the school department. I mean, the amount of resources the city has committed to make that transition smooth and embrace every family and every kid in our system is extremely important. And I think what shows is, we're seeing more of those immigrants come to Quincy, so there's a recognition that we are a safe city, we're a clean city, we've got great schools, and great opportunity for people to partake and enjoy. So this is a little, little tricky, because I understand the community is looking for recognition. And back to Mr. Guttrow's point, the whole discussion last few years of the AI, inclusion, concerns me a little bit in that, just what you talked about, what's the criteria, what's the ratio? You know, what is the Indian population? At what point do we consider Diwali, et cetera, et cetera? It becomes challenging. I think if I were to vote for it, I would vote for it similar to the other communities whereby we would celebrate it on the day. So if it fell on a weekend, I would not add another day off. So for that reason, what I'd like to do is adopt the calendar as we have it, but let's not wait till next year. Why don't we do a survey of the system? We come up with some questions of all face and cultures and see what's on people's minds. But we've got some time, because as you just described, Lunar New Year this year and next year, I think you said, is weekend.
It's Saturday and Sunday.
At the very least, this next year is on a Saturday. I know Mrs. Lebo alluded to the festivals we have. The city is fully, fully supportive with all kinds of resources on all those festivals. It's not a case of, I think somebody may allude to, we just go to get a picture taken. No, we're there because we're part of it, we're part of the community, and we're leaders in the community, we should be there, just as we should be for every culture. I mean, I go each year for, when the Indians have their first day of cricket down in General Palmer, and they have a great celebration around it. So, you know, I think we do it well in the city. This is a, this is an important question on how we go forward, and I think Doug articulated it pretty well in that regard. So I would suggest we adopt the calendar as it is, let's not wait a year, let's have further discussions, further meetings, because I would support, if we get on that road, that it would just be celebrated on the day. I would not support if it was on a weekend to take a school day off. So we have a year, from my perspective, to do a little bit more about it. So with that, I will support the calendar.
Any other comments? Okay, first, I want to throw out a few apologies. I'd like to apologize to Angela Chen. I don't see her here this evening, but if Angela, if you can hear me, I would like to apologize to you and your fellow students who appeared, and the parents who appeared at our last meeting, especially the policy subcommittee meeting, because we made them wait, and then I think they had a false pretense that the subcommittee was going to discuss the issue, and there was no discussion. I'd also like to apologize to the hundreds of parents that will be calling in to excuse their children on that day. And while I'm doing that, I'd also like to apologize to our attendance staff at our schools, because they're going to have to receive those calls that day. An apology is also given to students who is also, uh, given to students who have to make a choice between obtaining perfect attendance and missing work and celebrating on a most important holiday to their family. And because the students are a majority, and that's the difference in my mind, that's the trigger. The difference is they're a majority of our students of Asian descent. Having this holiday would send a clear message that this school committee is in touch with this community and respects the Asian people within the city enough to celebrate with them. It would also send a message to prospective Asian teachers that we desire a staff that is more reflective of our student population, something else in our EDI Subcommittee, because we'll be a community that celebrates their differences. And lastly, again, to Angela, I say, true leaders are not only people that have a vision. They get others to pursue that vision as well. And Angela, you've got twelve hundred people in this community to see that vision and follow along with you. Uh, and there are more, hundreds more, that probably will be signing it after. And seeing all of that, I would take, I would like to entertain a motion to amend the current motion to include February, February ninth, twenty twenty-four as a holiday for Lunar New Year. And I would entertain that as an amendment from anybody on this body.
Seeing none, Superintendent, please call a roll.
Mr. Bagoli?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
You're voting on the original motion to approve the twenty twenty-three calendar that the Subcommittee brought forward.
Thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
No.
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Okay, old business. Oh, no, we're, we're, uh, going back to item B in the Superintendent's report. Elementary and middle school spring concerts.
Thank you and good evening again, everyone. A preliminary schedule for elementary, middle, and high school concerts was shared with the school committee at your places. The schedule will be updated as additional dates are scheduled, and calendar invitations will be sent to the school committee to attend events as your schedule permits. It's great to see the, uh, twenty twenty-three spring concert schedule, because we have not seen something like this since twenty nineteen. So it's great to see it back, uh, before the committee. Next is the recent Quincy Public Schools events. Last Friday, over seven hundred students from Point Webster Southwest and Central Middle Schools were recognized by the Boston Celtics and Arbella Insurance Foundation for High School Performance on the All-Star Program writing and art contests and perfect attendance, thanks to Executive Director Keith Sagala and his team, who coordinated the program with Principals Christine Barrett, Richter Cristofaro, and Courtney Mitchell, and of course, the school staffs who also participated. And thank you to Aaron Perkins and the SLT also helped, uh, Mr. Sagala along the way. So thank you, Mrs. Sagala, for that event, and thank you to everyone that made that possible. Certainly Arbella Insurance and the Boston Celtics. Uh, the Quincy High School History Bowl team has returned from a successful weekend at the National History Bowl Competition in Washington, DC. The competition included ninety-five varsity teams and fifty-four JV teams from thirty-eight states, the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico. Seniors Yufan May, Deja Prakash, and Liam McCoy, and freshman Eddie Giza were excited to bring the team back to the competition for the first time since twenty eighteen. With a record of seven out of ten, the Quincy High School team earned the Varsity Afternoon Group Champion Award. Congratulations. Eddie Giza, the Massachusetts Junior Varsity History B Champion, also participated in the Junior Varsity National History B on Sunday. Thank you to Quincy High School History Teacher James Akita for working with these students throughout the season, and thank you for all of the staff who helped, uh, make this a possibility for our students. And congratulations to those students I had mentioned, uh, that make us very proud. Uh, next is upcoming Quincy Public Schools and City of Quincy events. In addition to the concerts, concerts mentioned earlier, the last months of the school year will bring a number of events, and there are as follows, just to name a few. Quincy High School Fashion Show, which will occur on Thursday, May fourth, at seven PM in the Lloyd Hill Auditorium. Cleaner Greener Quincy will occur on Saturday, May sixth, from nine AM to noon at school and park sites throughout the city. That's a great event. LPAC Meeting will occur on Thursday, May eleventh, at six PM on Zoom. Uh, the Quincy Multicultural Festival will occur on Saturday, May thirteenth, from noon to four PM at the Four River Field. Again, it's a change of location, so that will be at the Four River Field. Uh, Swing on the Common will occur on Saturday, May thirteenth, from two PM to five PM on the Hancock Adams Common. The QPS Robotics Challenge for grades five through eight will occur on Saturday, May twentieth, at Quincy High School, beginning at nine AM. Long Clear Elementary School May Festival will occur on Saturday, May twentieth, from ten AM to four PM. The, the QPS Community Fitness Night for students in kindergarten through grade five will occur on Tuesday, May twenty-third, at six PM at Veterans Memorial Stadium. Uh, and with that, that will end my Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Questions? Comments? Okay, Coach, Mr. Bagoli?
Question. Um, our, uh, team from North Quincy with the Quiz Bowl, how did, how did they do? They were competing in April, I believe?
High School Quiz Bowl.
High School Quiz Bowl?
They didn't. They got eliminated.
They were eliminated. They were eliminated.
They were eliminated.
Yes, they were.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll recognize those student names up the next.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, Proposed Revision of School Committee Policy Book, Section five point two point three, Emergency Closings. This is up for a vote. Mr. Bagoli?
Uh, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley.
Motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. We approve. Superintendent, call a roll.
Mr. Bagoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, New Business, QPS Summer Programs. Ms. Perkins and Ms. Roy to present.
Thank you very much for having us. Unfortunately, the slideshow isn't working this evening, but I know you have it in front of you, and we will be sure to update it and post it on our website. And I do just want to say, we were really excited to share it with you because Kelly Powers helped us put the slideshow together, and she did such an amazing job. But we will absolutely, um, put it up on the website and make sure it's available for everyone to see. So we're really excited to be here tonight to share with you our summer programs, uh, for the, this, the twenty twenty-three summer. I want to thank the school committee, uh, and the mayor for, again, uh, supporting such a robust summer program. It is truly amazing and is not offered in any other city in this area. So it's something that we as a district should be very proud of, because the offerings that we have are just above and beyond what is offered in other districts. Um, so just to start, you know, we're, we're going to be providing our summer programs again, um, and they are designed to intentionally monitor, promote, and reinforce the health and wellness and the well-being of students and staff. They, again, will be, uh, totally in per- in person. They are all developed, uh, being aligned to the, uh, prerequisite content standards for the next grade level. And they are centered on opportunities for academic enrichment, accelerated learning, and also academic support. We are incorporating social, emotional learning into all of our programs, and we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like. And, uh, we're focused on, as we have for the past few years, providing a range of opportunities for all students, so that every one of our students hopefully can find an opportunity that they might be interested in, in our, uh, summer programming. So at the elementary level, uh, we've talked about this before, but again, it is such a fun program. We are offering our bridge to reading and math. We added the math component during COVID, uh, and it's been very successful. It is a program that is focused on academic support. It is for students entering grades one through five, and it is a literacy and math skills program to increase proficiency in the classroom. It's designed to support students in the areas of reading comprehension, literacy, and critical thinking skills. And it is also developed to assist students in building fluency and number sense skills. It's a four-week in-person program, and it runs Monday through Thursday at Clifford Marshall, and it is an invitation program. Quest for Learning is another one of our summer programs. This was definitely a COVID keeper. Uh, we get rave reviews about this program. Um, it is such a fun program, and it, it is a program also that services students entering grades one through five, and it is a variety of enrichment activities. It focuses on the humanities, things like language arts and civics, and also STEM activities such as science, technology, engineering, and math. Some of the things that our students will do over the summer are explore books with various, um, authors, illustrators, and different topics. They learn about civics and about the foundations of local and national government. They also participate in a variety of science, technology, engineering, and math activities, and work to develop their critical thinking and problem-solving skills. This is also a four-week in-person program, and it is Monday through Thursday. And this is a signup program. So we will offer the registration. The registration, Maddie, we'll talk about that in a little bit. Will be opening soon, and it is on a first-come, first-served basis. Last year, we had about three hundred children who participated in this program. So it was a pretty impressive program. And with that, I will turn it over to Maddie from Middle School.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening. I'd like to just briefly describe, uh, three middle school programs that we have returning and one that we have, uh, in the works to propose. So the first one is an invitation program called Summer Boost, which we've had for many years. And just as the title, um, implies, this is a chance for students, um, who need that extra. Um, they need some more foundational skills. They would benefit from, uh, reteaching, um, and going over some new schools in addition to getting a jumpstart on the prerequisite skills in their core areas, reading, mathematics, science. Um, and that would, that'll make them more prepared for starting the school year in September. What we do with this four-week program is we also, um, incorporate thematic, um, integrated, uh, electives that the students can take. So it's not just all, um, you know, redoing the school year, that it's engaging, it's interesting, and it's, it includes a lot of cooperative learning and pro- and project-based learning as well. All eleven elementary schools will have, um, invitation or, or seats available to their rising fifth graders that they can recommend, as well as our five middle schools. We typically have for a summer boost, um, sixty to eighty students participate, but we can hold, we can certainly entertain up to a hundred. Hands-on Math has become very popular in the last, um, few years. This is an open program for any family of middle school students to apply for. It's a popular two-week program that, um, utilizes both tactile math manipulatives, but also virtual manipulatives. Um, it's so popular that we're adding a fourth instructor this year. So we'll do two sessions of two two-week sessions of hands-on math. Our third offering, which we're bringing back, is, uh, the Summer STEM Academy for students in six through eight, an intensive four-day exploration. I know it sounds short, but it's very intensive. There's a lot of creativity, um, and problem solving. Um, we follow the design process, a lot of trial and error. There is, um, an emphasis on taking risks and learning from mistakes. Um, and again, a lot of that cooperative learning. What's really wonderful about the hands-on math and, uh, actually, all three pro- middle school programs, is that students also get a chance to make friends from students across the city, not just their own, um, schools. For our, um, what's in the works is a potential, we're really excited about this, a two-week theater program for middle school students that will take place at Quincy High School. So more on that as we, uh, as the planning continues. Next, I'd like to talk about, um, high school programming, and, um, the first one that we're committed to offering every summer, um, and we're, we just hired a new facilitator, and they are already starting, um, under the guidance of, uh, Director Larry Tagliari on recruiting staff. So our Summer Pathways to Success is in-person credit recovery for rising tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. And this is an intensive, immersive, you know, just for the month of July, a little bit into August, uh, this year, uh, so that students can, um, get those essential skills and concepts, that they can get them down, show evidence that they understand them, that they are becoming proficient in them. There are assessments embedded in credit recovery. And then the students, if they attend and they, they do their best, um, almost all of them succeed, and they pass, and they regain that, those credits, so that when they return to school in September, they are in a much better standing, which takes some stress off of them and makes them feel more confident going forward. Um, the program will be held at Quincy High School this year, and guidance counselors will be assisting, uh, the program facilitator in identifying students and encouraging them to sign up. We don't have to wait until the final report card, um, to get the majority of students, um, prepared and registered for the, for the program. We can always make adjustments, uh, the week before the program starts. Next, on behalf of Keith Sagala, I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the programs that he is a point of contact for. And the first one is Ladders to Success. This is an invitation program. It's funded through Mass Hire South Shore Workforce Board, and the, and Mass Hire specifically funds programs to serve students who are experiencing an identified need and would benefit from this program, from the Signal to Success curriculum. Eligible students are presented with the invitation, and they're encouraged to apply. The program is for eligible eighth graders transitioning into the high school in September of twenty-three. Students must be at least fourteen years of age to participate. And you'll, you'll see on your slides that there are five core themes: health and wellness, financial literacy, technology, employability, and entrepreneurship. So it's a really interesting program for these students who participate. Um, the Signal to Success curriculum assists people, uh, these young, are young adults, uh, in learning and practicing the interpersonal skills that are so important, not only in school, but in the workplace and in life in general. Another cool thing about this program is that participating students actually earn an hourly wage for participating, fifteen dollars an hour, and could actually earn up to sixteen hundred for the summer. Quincy High School is the program's home base. Next, we have, um, QPS Summer Youth Works. Grades nine through twelve students are encouraged to apply, and based on criteria outlined, again, by the Mass Hire Workforce Board, applicants will be selected to participate in the program. Eligible students have the opportunity of a workplace experience in public, private, or nonprofit organization within the city of Quincy. This is a win-win for both our students and the organizations, the business organizations in the city of Quincy. Um, kids get to learn onsite some wonderful skills. They get to meet and maybe develop some mentors in the process, and our, uh, public and private and nonprofit sector also get to see the future workforce, um, that's out there and available to them. Another program where participating students can work up to two hundred and ten hours, um, at seventeen dollars an hour. So some great opportunities. And again, um, this is, uh, I think the second or third year, just about, we've got the Early College High School Pathway Summer Institute, um, which offers college-level courses and the opportunity for our high school students to earn up to six or seven college credits, um, for an array of courses that include math, science, sociology, business, and technology. A hundred and ninety-one students are taking advantage of three hundred and twenty available seats in these courses. Early college high school students were given first priority to register, and then it was open to all students at the high school level. And approximately a hundred non-early college high school students are taking advantage of the summer course offerings. So that's really exciting. Now I'll turn it back over to Erin.
Uh, we are also offering our programs for students with disabilities. So we have a couple of, uh, different opportunities. So we have our Learning Center Pre-Kindergarten Program, which is, uh, happens at the Emilio Delaqueezza Building. It's a five-week half-day program, uh, four days a week, and it is an invitation-based program, and it's focused on the students', um, individual goals and objectives as outlined in their IEPs. Also, the Learning Center. Uh, this is a little bit of a change. Uh, this program was typically housed at North Quincy High School, and it will be now housed at Southwest Middle School for this summer. It's a five-week, uh, half-day program also. It's for students entering grades one through grade twelve, and the program is also focused on, uh, the individual goals which are found in students' IEPs. Additionally, um, this is a newer program. We added this as a result of COVID, and this is a program for our students who are in our Transitional Kindergarten Program. So these are children who have just finished the Transit- Transitional Kindergarten Programs at Lincoln Hancock and at Atherton How. And so this, uh, five-week summer program is located at Clifford Marshall, and it's a continuation of that program, and it is for students who are considered to be at significant risk of regression. And it's designed to help those students maintain their skills and get ready for the next academic year. Um, and then we have our Language Development Class, which is also housed at Clifford Marshall. It's a five-week program. It's for students who participate in our Language Development Program at Atherton How, Snug Harbor, and at Southwest Middle School. How, Snug Harbor, and at Southwest Middle School. It's also geared for students who are in danger of significant regression over the summer, and it's designed to maintain the skills that they've learned throughout the year. We do also students who are entering, might be entering, the language development class for the following school year. It is, we also invite those students to attend, as that's a nice transition into the program. We have some programs for our English language learners. We have, which is a longstanding program, it's a huge success for us. It's Camp Can Do. It's a four-week summer program at Clifford Marshall, and it's for our littlest learners, and it is for students who are at the emerging and developing level of their English language development. And we, this is another longstanding program that the students love, is our Middle School Swell Academy. It's a four-week summer program, and it is focused on helping students increase their English language proficiency in speaking and writing, and also strengthening academic skills. It focuses on science and local and national history, and it focuses our students on learning about Quincy's rich historical and environmental treasures. In each of our programs, we have a social, emotional, and wellness component. So we do hire guidance counselors for our summer programs. And some of the things that our teachers do are things like calm classroom activities to, you know, relax, kind of re-center and calm the, the mind and body. We do physical fitness activities, things like box are incorporated into our programs. One of the things that is new this year that we, we really thought long and hard about with our credit recovery program, we decided to split our credit recovery program. So we have the program that Maddie talked about, which will be taking place at Quincy High School, which has been a longstanding, traditional program. We had incorporated our online Excelis Credit Recovery Program, which typically involves students in like our past program, or maybe in goals. And we decided to split those programs. So we're going to be offering an online Excelis Credit Recovery Program separate from the, the traditional Credit Recovery Program. And that will be, we will be offering a teacher and a classroom for students to come in and do what they need to do, so they can do it in a supportive setting. They don't have to do it with us, but we highly recommend that they do, because obviously when they come in and they sit with us and with the teacher, they're more apt to get the course done. And then also, we have things like team-building activities and partner interactions for social work, and we offer some programs that really focus on building social skills. We're also partnering with Walker and Quarry again to offer the Middle School and High School Wellness Group, Living Out Loud. And so for students that are interested in that, they need to use the Quarry website in order to register for that. But that's a program that meets once a week for eight hour, for eight weeks, I'm sorry, at Eastern Nazarene College. And it is an existing program. It, it, we have great success with it. We thank Walker and Quarry for continuing that partnership and offering this program. And those groups will focus on identifying feelings, developing coping skills for those feelings, and engaging in problem-solving and team-building activities. And now, just to talk about some of the fun things that we'll be doing, Maddie, we'll go over our site-based activities.
I know I like to focus on the academics, but the summer programs actually offer a lot of fun, particularly for our elementary and our middle school programs. Even if they have an academic focus, we make sure that we integrate plenty of times to socialize and do cooperative learning that's fun and problem-solving. We also include field dates. We want to make sure we get them outside. Virtual field trips. There's plenty of arts and crafts and art projects that go on in the programs. Site-based field trips such as Drums Alive and Rainforest Reptiles, as you see in the picture here. Community-based field trips and guest speakers and presenters. So it's not just a sit and get for the entire summer. It really is meant to be integrated and using all five senses. We also want to make sure that we promote for Sarah DeFour, the free summer lunch program again in the city of Quincy. Free, healthy, delicious lunches to any child under age 18 during the summer vacation at five convenient locations. And for our, our viewing public, I'll just, I'll share that it will be Monday through Friday during July and August, from 11 to 1:00 p.m. at Parker Elementary School, Lincoln Hancock, the War II Community Center, Snug Harbor School, and Montclair Elementary School. Again, any child or student 18 or younger can come for a free lunch, and we encourage them to do so. We will post this information on our website, and we can also connect families with Sarah DeFour if they have any additional questions. So in terms of what's next, we are, as we always are, we still have the current school year underway. There's still lots of work being done for the next two months, including promotional ceremonies, concerts, MCAS testing, regular, you know, teachers trying to finish up their regular curriculum. But we are starting to build the summer program. The first thing we do is a needs assessment. We revise and decide what we're going to offer for the school year. We are in the process of hiring, and I'd like to thank our QPS staff who have already completed our, you know, our application form and are already eager to work for the summer. We still need teachers in most of our programs, so we encourage them to reach out to me if they'd like the link again. I'm happy to send it to them, and we encourage them to apply. Outreach to students and families has already started for invitation-only programs. Links to enroll for open programs will be available on Monday. As I said, we're in the process of completing our hiring. Information will be on the QPS webpage. We could also utilize Aspen to send out email blasts, and there are some flyers that Laura could include in the community notices as well. Staff will participate in professional development prior to the start of their program. We're ordering summer supplies and resources, and as Erin likes to call it, summer swag. We're in the process, every, every child who registers for a program gives us their t-shirt size. So everybody gets a summer singing t-shirt and water bottle, and there's loads of awards and incentives that go on, no matter what level the program is, even at the high school level. And that's it. So we look forward to a safe, productive, and fun summer program, and we thank you so much for your continued support.
Mr. Bergold.
The Youth Works program, can you give me an idea as to what resources we're going to be using? What businesses, what organizations?
Well, that's a great question, and may I ask Keith to come up and address that? He's the point of contact for Youth Works.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just one more time, can you ask the question? What's the question?
Just what organizations and businesses are you going to be using?
Nonprofit, certainly the Quincy Public Schools, the YMCA, many of the facilities that the mayor works with in regards to the parks, rec, and so on and so forth.
Libraries.
So there's no, like, no Quincy businesses that are involved?
There is Quincy businesses, Stop &amp; Shop, headquarters, works directly with us. Shaw's Market is another, another organization that works with us. But there's more nonprofit than there are private.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We are reaching out to certainly more, more business partners, and those facilitators are currently, case managers, are currently working to recruit more business partners.
I think it's just a great way to introduce our students different pathways, you know, post-grad, if they get involved in a, in a business that they are excited about, maybe they'll pursue that.
Of course. I know the Chambers is very involved in some of these works as well.
Quincy Art Association was lucky to have someone last year help run the gallery.
Quincy College hires a few, few members as well?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gatto, then Mrs. Hughley, then Mrs. Lebo.
Just a quick question for Erin. So as we came out of COVID, the number of programs seemed to explode, summer programs, as did the funding that we got. And participation numbers were also, if I recall, pretty high and off the chart. So I'm assuming that A, you anticipate demand is going to be comparable. B, are there any specific programs that have dropped or added? And then C, are we still getting money from other sources, or at some point, does this just get embedded in, in our budget? And is it there now?
So we definitely have anticipated demand. We've, that's why we started actually our hiring process really early, earlier than we have. And we do have a good amount of teachers that have already registered and applied and signed up. Obviously, we, we always like more, because then we can offer more, we can take more students, or our classes can be a little bit smaller. But we do actually have a good number of staff already that are, you know, are, are ready to go, which is nice. And then the funding, we're still using ESAR, some of ESAR funding. I'm sorry, I forget what the second one was.
The other one was, are there any, is there any programming elements that you said, that low attendance last year, that dropped, or anything new that we've added in specifically?
We had changed, there was nothing that we really dropped that what we did, oh, the, you know what, actually, there was one program, the High School EL and Bridge to High School, were the two that we did not run this summer because of low enrollment, staffing, those kinds of things. But, but, but what we did do was, you know, when we, especially Quest, because Quest was such a huge success for us, the first time that we ran it. And we didn't, we didn't do it the same way we did it last year. We had, like, it was like a one week, you could do one week here and one week there. And what we decided was that that was just kind of too much and too confusing for the, everybody, the teachers, the facilitators. And so we actually ended up making that a four-week program and just incorporating all of those different, so there had been like a one-week civics program and a one-week book club. And so we took all of those things and we combined it into one program and made the Quest program. And so that's kind of, that was something that we changed. This is our second year of doing that as one full program, and last year was very, I mean, we, that beach would know, the whole building, I'm sure Mr. Santoro can attest to the drop-off, was full. So it was, it was packed. So we had, we had, people loved it. I've already gotten calls from parents asking, is that going to be back? It's a very popular program.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hughley.
Thank you. More logistics, this is fabulous, first off, this is great. So when will parents be expected that they can, that they can get a booklet? How do they get a booklet? When are the invitations going to go out to parents? When can they say, oh, I haven't got one yet, apparently I'm not getting one, you know, I might want to sign my kid up for something? And how do they sign up?
Great question. So the, the materials will be posted on our website, starting at the end of this week. The booklet is on our website. So all of this, the presentation that we have for you tonight will be available with all of the programs, plus we have a updated summer brochure that we post on, and is available on all of our social media platforms. The registration for the programs where you need to sign up will be available on Monday. So I think, what is that, the eighth? I think that's the eighth, Monday, May 8th. And the invitations will also be going out, you know, probably next week. So for any of the invitation-based programs, for the special education programs, I believe that those have already started going out. So I think it would just be like the Bridge program and maybe the middle school, I think, that we are, we're working on getting those invitations out.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you, Mr. Santori. This, this is wonderful, again, the Quest program, you're right, it's one of the, it's a, it's a shining star in kids' lives. They really loved it.
They loved it.
They loved it. They absolutely loved the program. I have a, a question, and I think maybe Ms. Condon can help us with this, if it can even be contemplated, maybe not for this year, probably not, but maybe for a subsequent year. Having been spending some time in the school doing food waste diversion, we have a lot of kids who speak different languages. And when they're in the cafeteria, they speak different languages with their friends. And I think about those kids, and I think they're not gaining any literacy skills in their language. And I'm wondering if we could have contemplated at some point in time getting some program where we could teach literacy skills in some of the Chinese languages, maybe in Portuguese, depending upon the population and the young, and whether that would be valuable to that community. Because I think, you know, to lose the ability to read and write in your language that you speak as you become, maybe you could weigh in, maybe I'm crazy. As you, as you learn to read and write in English, are you losing the ability to be able to converse like that in your, in your native language? And is there any way we could support, or is, is there any such thing as supporting that in kids?
I mean, I think we could. I think we could certainly, I mean, we offer things like, you know, Mandarin and, you know, at the high schools. So I think we certainly could.
Could some of those teachers teach at an elementary level where these kids are just, I, I don't know, would it be valuable?
Partner.
I, I just think that it's, I, you know, it's tragic to lose that ability when you could be really fluent in two languages.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree. I think we, and we, maybe we could partner with like Quarry or something, you know, someplace like that. I bet they could help us with something like that.
I, I just would like to see if it's valuable, and it just intrigues me when I see those kids who can speak that well and are no longer able to read and write.
We can definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
I will say, my mother always says, I can't speak Italian well and I can't speak English well, because she's like in between both. But my quick question for you, I, I have a friend who lost his eyesight, has a service dog, and I just happened to see him the other day, and he asked, and this might be something if you haven't already scheduled all of your presenters during the summer, and I don't know, you know, I can connect with you later. But they have like a program where they bring a service dog in and they show the kids how to approach service dogs. You know, the protocol around service dogs, you know, kids will grow up to them and want to hug them. If you haven't done that yet, like, done your whole schedule, I'll connect, and I think they would love it. So I'll connect with you and get the contact information.
Last year, yeah, that would be great. Last year, they, they brought in, for the older kids at North Quincy High, the special education program, they brought in the comfort dogs, and they loved them. So they would love that. That would be wonderful.
Good. All right, I'll connect with you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item B under New Business, Quincy High School NEASC Report. Superintendent Moulton.
Thank you. Before you is the final NEASC report, final meaning it is the really beginning of the NEASC accreditation process. I did ask Mrs. Perkins and Mrs. Roy to kind of just guide us and guide you through the process of NEASC accreditation. Again, the, this, what they call final report is really just the assessment of where Quincy High is and, and where Quincy High needs to go and the steps we need to take to get there according to NEASC. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Perkins.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so before I begin, I just want to really thank Quincy High School and the Steering Committee, because they really have done an incredible amount of work already, even though it's only the beginning of the process. They have done just incredible, incredible work. And so just the members of the Steering Committee are Kevin Bell, Edie Boynton, Jeff Brech, Michael Ellis, Mike Gendron, Julie Krieger, and Ed Smith. And also participating are the interdisciplinary team members and facilitators, and they really did just an amazing job. So the start of the process was that Quincy High School did a self-report. So they looked at the standards for accreditation for, for NEASC, and they developed a self-report and identified where they thought they were doing well and areas that were considered priority areas or areas where they needed to work on. And they, the staff took a vote, this, you know, took loads and loads of time. They, they did multiple presentations on it, starting last year, and the staff voted, in the end, the staff voted, whether or not they agreed on the areas that they identified or not. And that was what then created their self-report. Then they had a collaborative, they called a collaborative conference, where the representatives from NEASC actually come to the school, they spend two days, they do a site visit. That happened in December, and they interview students, staff, us, they interviewed the SLT and the superintendent and parents, and they also observe classes, they, you know, kind of assess the facilities, and all that happens over a two-day period, and they also review the self-report. From there, they look at, and they survey, they do surveys as well, of the staff, families, and students. And then they look to see whether or not they agree with the information presented in the self-report. And so then they share what is considered their final report, which you have in front of you today. From there, the next steps are that the staff at Quincy High School will use that information to develop an improvement plan that they will then work on basically for the next two years. And so the NEASC people will come back in December of 2024. And so they have, you know, that whole time to work on the areas that were identified as priorities. So just, I know you have it in front of you, but just to reiterate, the three priority areas that they identified were areas that they identified were developing a vision of the graduate, what does a graduate look like, how do students get there, and then also assessing, you know, how that's going, being able, the ability to assess whether or not you're successful in getting kids to, to that, that vision. Creating, in terms of student support, the second priority was creating a formal tiered intervention process. They recognize that the school has an SST team that meets once a week, but areas that they felt that this school needed to focus on were an actual formal intervention process. So once a student is referred for SST, then what happens? What does that referral look like, and what are the interventions that are then put in place? They, they acknowledge that there were a lot of things for special education students and English language learners, but for students that were not to that level yet, we need to really work on developing some more interventions. And, and then also just that process of how students get to access those interventions. So they're going to be working on that. And then the final area of priority that they identified was updated and aligning curriculum maps, and so this will be something that they'll be working on for the next year and a half. They, they already have some curriculum maps that were developed, but I think that they need to spend more time on it. They initially, way back when, under Beth Hallet, they put them on Aspen, and there were curriculum maps, I think that might have been in response to the last time they went through the accreditation process. And so I think that just putting those, the maps on a common site that's easily accessible, maybe linking them to Aspen, the, the process on Aspen is, is a little bit clunky for the curriculum map, so, but maybe get, giving them a link on Aspen, something like that. So we'll certainly be helping them do, with whatever they need in order to support them. But the, the school did really, really well, we're very proud of all the work that they did. They had tons of commendations at the end of the report, as I'm, I'm sure you saw, and so we're just so thankful with all the work that went into it and the time that the team spent, you know, working for their students to get that accreditation going. That's the NEAS report.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Lebo.
Just a comment, I, I think, I think if you read the whole report, it really is pretty glowing.
Mm-hmm.
It really is pretty glowing, so it's nice to see that.
Yep.
I have one question that maybe it's even before your time, but what about the ISSP? Didn't we have individual student success plans for kids?
It, it's interesting that you say that. So we have an ICAP, so we do have an ICAP, which is the Individual Accommodation Plan, and so I actually was involved with that years and years ago. And so the, the, you know, this is, they, they, you know, they got the draft, they've reviewed the draft, but they, you know, they already had areas that they had identified in the self-report. So they've already started working on that and actually are already starting to implement the ICAP at the high school. And so they, you know, actually Keith and I have talked quite a few times about the ICAP and what that looks like, and so we do have it, I think he's updating it for the needs of the population now, and they are using that at SST.
Thank you.
I just, I went through this the last time, I know exactly what you're talking about, and what I appreciate is the fact that we ask our teachers and administration to do so many things, and this is just something else, just thrown right at them, that involves hours of preparation and meeting time. Where is North Quincy High in the process? Do you know? How many years?
Yeah, they, they are due next year. Their process is cut next year.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One other comment, Mr. Santoro.
Yes, Mrs. Lebo.
I understand that nobody really knows about the vision of the graduate. Every school's having a problem with that, so I've spoken to a lot of people who've been through this and they're like.
Yeah.
So it's a whole, that's a whole new thing with NEAS.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, item C, South Shore Educational Collaborative Board, we need a representative, Superintendent?
Thank you. If I could request that the committee make a motion to appoint me as the, as Quincy's district representative for the South Shore Educational Collaborative. It's an annual appointment that has to be made by the school committee.
On a motion, Mr. Begoli, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we approve that Superintendent is our representative. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
Mayor Koch. Thank you.
Item D, grant $32,000 for the ST math program for Point Webster and Southwest, grades five and six. This is a presentation we just heard. Superintendent Mulvey.
Thank you. As we discussed in last week's Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting, the Quincy Public Schools will partner with the ATN Foundation for a grant to benefit mathematics instruction in grades five through six at Southwest and Point Webster Middle Schools for three years, beginning next school year. The grant will fund the licenses for the online ST mathematics program and has a value of $32,000 for the 2023, 2024 school year. If we could have a motion to accept that grant.
On a motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Gattro, we approve. Superintendent, call a roll.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mayor Koch. Thank you.
Item E, QPS emergency response plans, this is for referral to the Facility Security and Transportation Subcommittee by Mr. Gattro. Any discussion, Mr. Gattro? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item F is an out-of-state travel of one day, Broad Meadows Middle School, grade eight to Canobie Lake. On a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We have a memorandum of agreement with the SEIU Local 888, Quincy Paraprofessionals Union. I believe we go into executive session.
For that purpose.
For that purpose, we'll return for the response to that. Any additional business?
We need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion, yes.
They're not going yet, they have to do.
We're going, we're going to go, we're going to come back to it. Any additional business? Mr. Begoli.
I just have to bring up a safety issue that I've been made aware of within the last week. Ice cream trucks outside of schools selling ice cream at, at dismissal. It's a dangerous, dangerous thing for our kids to be put.
I saw, I saw a truck at Peachwood Knoll this week.
And they've been at Bernozzani as well. And you know and I know that there's an ordinance in the city that prohibits that type of vehicle being anywhere near a school. Now, I think the principals need to be made aware, if they see one, they should call the Quincy Police Department and/or the License Board, Jonathan Brillo, and let them know, and they can pull that license from that truck, from that vehicle, because they're made aware, when they apply for the license, what the ordinances are for the city. And for them to blatantly disregard it is, I think, a slap in the face to us, and it's dangerous for our kids. Thirty years ago, 25, 30 years ago, I recall very vividly, a young man who, at Atlantic Middle School, saw the ice cream truck, ran across the street, hit by a car. He did not die that day, but his injury was such that a couple of years later, he did pass away from that, from those injuries. So it is a safety issue, and I think we need to address it, I need to be, as soon as possible, because it's the same people doing it every single year, and they know better. So we can either say, no, you're not, we're not going to give them a license anymore, or we're going to revoke it.
Especially during pickup time, it's already confusing.
It's already mass confusion.
I just, I'm at a loss as to where we go next, that's all, I, do we submit a letter? Do we?
I'll certainly alert the principals to, alert Mr. Drakeio and our school resource officers. Our school resource officers and Mr. Drakeio are, they would respond instantly to that location, and obviously then they can, the police officers can then take a report and we can submit it to the licensing board and then ask that they take action against these ice cream trucks. So again, our resource officers with, in collaboration with Mr. Drakeio, will nip that in the bud, and I'll communicate to our principals and obviously to the SLT to make sure that we're aware of these trucks on premises or anywhere in the vicinity, so then we can alert the school resource officers to that location, they'll develop a report, obviously tell them to move, and then hopefully bring that report to the licensing board for further review. That would be my suggestion, and we can do that immediately.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Those trucks are supposed to have a, a yellow light that goes around and around, just like a, a school bus puts out there, stop signs, just to make people aware that there's a vehicle parked and kids are around.
Thank you for bringing that to.
Thank you, Mr. Begoli. Okay, Communications, upcoming school committee meetings, May 17, June 14, at 6:30 in the Cardington Building. Upcoming Subcommittee meetings at Cardington, May 24, at 6:00, for Budget and Finance, followed by Facility, Security, and Transportation, and Special Ed. On May 31, beginning at 6:00, we have the Budget Public Hearing, followed by Teaching and Learning Policy. Reports of Subcommittee, Quarterly Budget and Sub-Finance Subcommittee, Mayor Koch to report on the April 26 meeting. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, we had two items, obviously an update on where we are in the budget, and we're through the fiscal year and in good shape. The other piece was Mr. Malaney walked the committee through the warrant process, how that works, and that's my report.
Questions? Thank you. Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, Mrs. Lebo to report on the April 26 meeting. Mrs. Lebo.
Yes, on April 26, we had a meeting, we had three items on the agenda. The first one was about our mentoring program, and Madeline reviewed the program with us. We had 79 proteges who were mentored by 70 veteran teachers, all veteran staff members from across disciplines. They were assigned mentors within the first week of school, and they've been meeting with them, they've held five meetings with their mentees since then. They also feature guest speakers, inspiring videos, sharing of best practices, and resource opportunities to connect with Java-like colleagues. Our mentoring program has been going on for more than 25 years. Probably nobody left in the schools teaching who hasn't been through, well, a few people maybe. So it was a great presentation, so I want to thank her for that. And then Ms. Perkins reviewed some research she had done about Kids Voting USA. This was brought to us by members of the Quincy Vote group that would like to see us doing some more voting preparation for our students, and so they asked us to take a look at this curriculum, and Ms. Perkins did a great job of going through it. She was familiar with it, hadn't used it a long time ago, and told us that the curriculum has not been updated since 2005, and even more importantly, or just as importantly, I should say, they're not responsive. So we've been reaching out to them, Quincy Votes has been reaching out to them, trying to become an affiliate. There is no response from them, I think they're a very low-budget organization, and I think they, they, they used to have a bigger chest of money that they could do this far. So I think they're trying to find a way to sustain it, but it's not really where we would want to be using it at this point in time. But Ms. Perkins did explain to us, and Ms. Roy did too, about all the civics projects that are going on, based on the new civics, Social Studies curriculum from 2018, that it happens all through middle and high school, with a big focus in the eighth grade, and Ms. Perkins said she could pull together a team of our Social Studies teachers to look at a way to formalize getting voting practice into our schools, and this is not in the notes, but I did hear from a couple of the people in Quincy Votes, and they would like to be invited, maybe Judy Brahms is a wonderful, one of our sub-teachers that she's involved, she'd love to be involved in that group a little bit if possible. And the last thing that was on the agenda was our, we looked at the ST math curriculum that we accepted the gift from this, this evening, and that's a specific math program that's designed around spatial-temporal learning, and so it's a very unique thing, it's going to be very interesting to see how it works. I just want to assure people that the core mathematics are still going to be taught, that this is a 90-minute-a-week pullout that these kids will be getting in the fifth and sixth grade. Mr. Begoli mentioned, and it's true that that's where we struggle the most in our district with math, especially the sixth grade, so it's a perfect place to put it. So we're thrilled to see how it's going to go. It's fascinating to see, it really is, so it's, it'll be nice to see how it works. Everything else is on the website, that's all I have.
Okay, item C, Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Begoli to report on the April 26 meeting.
This is going to be somewhat redundant, but we met on April 26 to discuss the school calendar for next year. Two, two were presented, one, it was amended by Mr. Santoro, and another one, there was the, one that was presented by Ms. Owens. Mr. Santoro noted that to date, over 1,000 people have signed a petition, support adding Lunar New Year to the Quincy Public Schools holiday. Ms. Santoro said that an excuse app is available for students, but students are no longer able to achieve perfect attendance. It was moved to accept the original school calendar, and it was presented tonight.
Thank you. Now, item nine, Executive Session for Contract Negotiations, on a motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Gattro, Superintendent, call a roll.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
Mayor Koch.
Yes. And we will be returning to discuss item G when we come back. Thank you. Okay, we're resuming our school committee meeting to go back to item G, the memorandum of agreement with the SEIU Local 888 Union, the Quincy Paraprofessionals. This is a vote, and we have a motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, that we approve. Superintendent, please call a roll.
Mr. Begoli, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?